You won. Recording is in progress. If Preston and Pam, you guys are ready, we can. Guys, ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order the regular February Town Council meeting, February, Wednesday, February ninth, 2022. Call this meeting to order apologies that were on Zoom again. We just feel like we have to be careful until we get through this. This last surge that just seems to keep coming. Could we have a roll call, a roll call of everyone here, please?
Councilmember Beck.
Here.
Gramley.
Here.
Lakin.
Yeah.
Skyler.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Meyer.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here. All right, thanks, everybody. I believe we have a couple deletions from the agenda. We might have additions as well. Steph, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Yep.
So, yeah, Steph would like to request, and I'll go ahead and read this just for the record. The following modifications to the agenda. The addition of an action item for council to consider authorizing staff to submit a grant application to the HB twenty-one, twelve seventy-one dollar innovative housing strategies incentives grant program catalyst round. The next item is request to remove item number eleven from the agenda. That's to review an action on project development and implementation agreement Lena Street improvements between Lena Street Commons LLC and the town of Ridgeway. The third request is for the addition of an executive session item pursuant to Colorado revised statutes twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E for the purposes of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations regarding the installation of certain infrastructure and improvements and cost sharing of the same with Lena Street Commons LLC.
And I see that we need to have a motion and then a vote to amend the agenda to add the executive session. And to do that, we need a two thousand authority. So. Can someone just say? So moved, or do you need him to read all this?
I believe a so moved would work, but we'll look to Bo for that confirmation.
A so moved would be acceptable.
So moved.
Nice.
Who's got a second?
A second, Beth.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Beck. Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Gramley.
You're unmuted, Kevin.
Aye.
Thank you.
Lakin.
Aye.
Skyler.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Meyer.
Aye.
Okay, there's our unanimous vote to cover the two thirds necessary. Thank you for that. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
Nothing from staff.
Great.
Nothing else.
Thank you. Anybody on council have anything? Look like it. So that brings us to adoption of the consent calendar. Is there anything on there? Anybody wants to pull off to discuss separately? If not, is their motion approved?
Moved or approve the adoption of the consent count.
Second.
Motion's made in a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Gramley.
Aye.
Lakin.
Aye.
Skyler.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Meyer.
Aye.
Great, thanks, everybody. That brings us to public comments. This is established time on the agenda for anyone in in the public to address council regarding any item that's not otherwise listed on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Does anybody have anything tonight?
Couple of hands up.
Okay, I'm just getting that up. Let's see. I see Tanya. Go ahead, Tanya.
I'm also like to speak. My name is Kuno. I'm on the phone.
Okay, give us a second, Kuno. We'll get you.
Okay, and do you want me to stay stay off of video?
It's up to you. You can you can turn on your video if you like, or leave it off.
Okay, hi. Um, I just wanted to come. I wanted to have the annual report for the Uncompagri Watershed Partnership done by now, but I don't. But there's an important part of the report that I wanted to tell you about before anymore. February gets away. Each year, the Uncompagri Watershed Partnership Board and Staff pick who is the partner for the past year, who has partnered really well with UWP and really helped us move our mission forward. And this year, the Partner of the Year is the full town of Ridgeway. And I have copies of just that page to drop off at your office. I thought I didn't realize we were not having in person as well as Zoom. So I have some copies and I'll drop it by tomorrow to Town Hall. Basically, it says that you've been a significant longtime partner. And in two thousand twenty-one, the town upped its partnership with us even further. We really appreciated the River Corridor assessment that the town funded and did. We believe that will be really beneficial to the Uncompagri River and to our watershed. And the town hosted our Meet Your Watershed Series education in Dennis Weaver Memorial Park. And part some of the town council members participated in our recreation activities and meaning the new sustainable recreation committee. And John Clark, in particular, got out there and volunteered with us a lot. He was out at the Rawlins Park weed pool, which, believe me, is not an easy thing, pulling out from the ground spotted knapweed with really long roots. And he was also at Love Your gorge and helping it out there, even though it's not right here in the town of Ridgeway, but it's definitely above and upstream of here. So anything that's done upstream helps downstream as well. So I will drop off our thank you card and this information to the Town Hall tomorrow so that you can see it. And there's. Colorado Boy donates and supports this effort. So you'll be able to see how how they're supporting that in the thank you card. And I will promise I'll get the rest of the annual report to tell you all the great things that happened last year out to you sometime in the next week or so. I think that is all I had to say unless you have any questions.
Well, that's great, Tanya. Thank you for recognizing our support and thank you for all the hard work you do for UWP and for UWP in general. What a great entity partner that is in the region. We love our river and you guys do a great job of keeping it on the forefront of everybody's mind. So. Thank you for that. And thank you for the recognition. Anybody else have anything they want to say or? Questions, comments?
Just a big thank you, Tanya.
You're welcome. Thank you. Great.
Okay, thanks again. We'll look forward to seeing the card and everything. Okay, next up is Vicky. Is that Vicky Hawes? Vicky's iPad?
Yes, thanks, John. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, I would like to request the council consider putting back on the agenda the use of chemical herbicides, just to reconsider and allow a little more time for public comment and research. I'm trying to keep myself informed. I just read like ninety plus pages of the packet from two thousand three and two thousand ten and wasn't able to find the most current proposal. But there was so much time and energy put into keeping Ridgeway chemical free. And I'm just. Wondering if all those ideas have been utilized, like goats were mentioned several times. I have never seen goats here. And I just. Would really like us to put a little more time into this and a little more thought and wondering if any experts besides the URA County Weed Manager were consulted, or if there's any, just anything more, any more options. And another question is, do we know what the short and long term effects of the chemicals will have on our ecosystem? And how long before the residue is a hundred percent gone? One thing, I know this isn't a make it or break it for your decision making, but this will eliminate Ridgeway from consideration of B City USA qualification if we decide to use chemicals. Another point on that that I am curious about is. Why the town is relying on volunteers to pull the weeds. I would ask you guys to consider budgeting and paying people to do this because like in my mind, it's like relying on us to make citizens arrest for speeders on Sherman. It seems like something that should be taking care, not relied on with volunteers. Another comment would be, at a bare minimum, could you please revise last month's vote to be very specific on where the chemicals can be applied? And that it's an emergency one time use, so it's not opening the gates for a future of this type of weed control. So that's I have one more thing that I want to throw out that's like unrelated. I would ask you guys consider hiring a staff person to translate all the legal documents for us plain English speakers, so we can stay informed without having to read through the tedious legal language, whereas heretofore, I mean, most of the most of the time you could like. Put what's in ten pages of legalese into like two paragraphs without all the repetition and stuff. And that would just make it, I think, a lot easier for us community members to be participating in the process. Thank you.
Thanks, Vicky. I don't know if anybody want, and council wants to address her comments on the weed situation. I think we, I don't know if you were at last meeting and listen to the discussion. I mean, one thing we said over and over again was that this wasn't just going to be like the floodgates you mentioned before of applying chemicals to every possible weed infestation in town. It would be only in cases where. The infestation has gotten more than can be even handled by. Manual pulling and all that. It would be only chemicals that are on, I forget the name of the list, that is. Much less toxic. And, you know, basically, we we talked ourselves blue in the face about how we we understand how this is. Something we we're not excited about doing. We don't want to have to do it, but we have a weed problem that's gotten out of hand. And. We have to do something about it. And, you know, we don't have endless funds to hire troops and, you know, tons of people to go out and manually pull weeds. So, you know, I understand your comments. And personally, I'm very empathetic. And I I couldn't agree more that it's it's concerning to to say that we're gonna allow it. I think if you were to read the the previous policy, it actually never said that you couldn't do it. It was that we we're going to do everything we could to not do it if we could. To answer your one question, we did have goats. Managing weeds in in the athletic field for a while years ago. Then some of them got out, and I think one got run over. There's just there's unforeseen. Issues with anything you try. So. All I can, from my perspective, all I can say is that I'm hearing you. I empathize completely. And this isn't something we're taking lightly. And it's not just like, oh, gosh, we're gonna just give the county weed. Agent. carte blanche to to spray chemicals wherever she wants. That's not, that's not what we talked about. So anybody else want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I just was looking at the B City USA certification and the use, B Cities USA encourages reduced use of pesticides. And they also emphasize the importance of native plants. And that's the piece that I think we need to remember. This isn't a chemicals or nor no chemicals. This is a, we want to reduce invasive species such that we can have native species that are adapted to the area and appropriate for this place. And so there are also downsides of of losing native species. So there's, there's two. While while I understand the chemical can be a really scary word, it's also really scary to lose species that we should have.
Thanks, Beth. Anybody else?
I think the only other thing that I remember on this was that the intent is not to make this a continued process. So even though we have agreed to use the low toxicity chemicals in order to to abate this problem, it's it's only as needed, when needed, and it's not a, we're gonna do this every year. We're gonna hammer everything we can with it. So it's limited use, and the intent is to not have to continue to do this.
Yeah, may I make a comment, please?
Um. You want to address this issue?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment because I I live on Moffitt Street and I see we spend plenty of time of labor, man time, and machinery and equipment to maintain our parks for green eyes to see green things. However, I think maybe we could allocate some more time away from that and towards manually controlling the reason that we wouldn't have to spray. Okay?
Thanks for that, Kuno. Um. So. I guess, hopefully, you can. Vicky, you can. Take our comments. And and be somewhat reassured that we're not, we're not taking this lightly. I think it's great that Beth found that B City USA doesn't say no pesticides. I would have been really surprised if they did because I there's hardly, I bet there's almost no cities, municipalities, towns, anywhere in the country that can afford to not have some pesticide use in a very minimal way at times. And I think Beth's point about. A big, big part of our goal here is to. Put a dent in the the noxious weed issue so that our native species can can recover and thrive and and be successful at locking out the weeds in the future. As I thought your comment was really interesting about. Trying to find a way to boil some of our legal documents and our ordinances and stuff down to to what you'd call plain English. And I I'm very interested to do some research and find out if there are other municipalities that are that are doing anything like that, because I think it's a really good point. Legalese is legalese, and it's the word on it. But it does. It would be nice if it didn't have to make it feel hard for us to understand the basics of some of the things we're doing. So I will take that under consideration for sure.
Hey, John, can I ask Vicky a question really quick? How would this, how would this be different from like the staff memos that appear in the packet already? Like, Vicky, what would you like to see that's not, because like the staff memos, some of the planning ones get really long, but generally, they're like a one to one and a half pager.
I don't know if I'm accessing. Oh, first, let me just say, I appreciate your all's consideration of my comments very much. Thanks for, thanks for that. And I'm talking about like, I was digging into this in particular situation. I just remember from being on Town Council. It's like, back when I was doing is like. Anywhere from fifty to a hundred pages of legalese to read on all the agenda items. And it would just be nice if that could get condensed for the public to just give less volume and more and just tie it tighter and easier to to access.
I think your point's well taken. I'm not sure how possible it is that a lot of the issues we deal with are just simply complicated and. Can't be boiled down to a paragraph or two. But I do think that there. Plenty of examples where. Some of the resolutions or ordinances or. Planning documents that we're dealing with could be summarized better. And it's something we could definitely ask staff to look into as well. So I think it's a, it's a good question, and we need to try to see if we can accomplish some of that. Kuno, you had, did you have another issue you wanted to raise with us?
Yes, I have a little comment to make if I may.
Go ahead.
Okay. My first address is this new light that was installed on the corner of where I live. And it's definitely questionable whether that meets the night sky ordinance. And it also does not apply the same way that I, as a home builder or homeowner, need to only have things go straight down. And there's also on by observation, I noticed that all over town, we have different lighting districts, almost hardly any lights, no lights in solar ranges, some in River Park, different varieties of lights at different heights in different parts of town and different ranges of the what you actually see on the ground, what the light projects. So I would like to encourage the town to put the ugly lights from the neighborhood and put them out into the street where we need them along the highway and put the nice cool lights that are on the highway, put them out into the neighborhood where we'd always appreciate more quietness and more dark skies. My first point. Second one addresses the stop sign configuration within town. I find that Moffitt Street is still being used as a bypass for people that want to access. Either solar ranches or elk meadows. South Charlotte is like a byway with high speeds and that goes from directly from the highway to Moffitt Street and then up and around the corner with no stopping to get up to the end of South Elizabeth and South Amelia Street. I think that needs to be changed. And I'd be glad to visit with our town manager to show him the graph that I composed addressing all these issues. My third issue is every day kids from the house, from our town access to the high school through town and River Park, and they trespass every day through private property in order to get to the school. I think it's time for the town to step up. And approach the landowner that has a lot up there or an adjacent person to access their property with a legal defined and safe passage for our children and the adults that want to access this. This is oversight from originally developing that part of town and not thinking through that in the future, we would need illegal access to go from the town street over to the high school parking lot. The David, David's need is the owner. And if he's not amenable to selling his property, maybe for safety sake and for the long term future, we should approach the condemnation process.
Well, that's a, that's a big three things you've thrown out there, Kuno.
Well, let me finish my points, and you don't have to respond to any of it, okay? Because this is my state of the nation here in Ridgeway. My fourth point is that how we complain these days is that doesn't mean much to me if writing a letter gives me no more hope than others just being able to make a call. So. The other day, I was wanting to complain about something, and they says, well, you can write a letter. And that's not how things were handled. In the Old West. And the last question that I have is, this last summer in July, a couple of folks up on County Road five or past up there got caught stealing water from the town directly out of the ditch. And I would like to know what the town has done to appropriately represent the interests of its citizens. And that's, oh, my five minutes are almost up, so I'm gonna shut up. Thank you.
Thanks, Kuno. Haven't heard from you in a while. So you've been adding up your your comments. I appreciate it.
Good.
I I guess, I mean, I would like to throw out a couple of things about what you said. As far as the the streetlights situation, I've been, I think I've actually mentioned it to Terry. I think staff needs to take a look. Some of the lighting, and it sounds like maybe the town or Sam Sam Go Power maybe recently replaced the light at the corner of Marion Moffett by your place. Is that right?
Two weeks ago, yes. And it's ugly as hell and light and shine into my bedroom. And I have no more night sky.
Well, and that's, that's not right. I have noticed I walk around town a lot during the day and at night. And I've noticed, for some reason. Some of the, some of the LED that are supposed to be full cutoff have a sort of rectangular almost. Throw pattern and and in number of places around town, the streetlight on the corner of an intersection throws light well into a lot that's at the corner there. And that that we shouldn't be doing that. We should be fixing that. So. So I think you can know that I'm going to make sure Steph looks at that, maybe with Terry's help, and that we we get the appropriate light fixtures installed. So they are literally lighting the intersection, not the neighboring properties. That that shouldn't be happening. The stop sign issue, you and I have talked about this. You've mentioned it to council many times. I think there's probably some. Some changes that could be made. You know, the fact that people run the stop sign in front of my house all day, every day. I don't know what can ever be done of me standing out there with a with a flag to flag them down. You know, our traffic issues, I'd like to see us continue to to look into portable speed bumps, especially in the summer that will discourage people from using the side streets as a pass through. So just know, we're going to be looking at at some of those options. And I'm sure Preston's been taking notes on all your comments and will do what he can to address it. I'm not sure what to tell you about the last one about writing a letter versus the way it used to be done in the Old West. I don't know how it was done in the Old West, probably with.
Well, you call, you make a call. Like, for instance, when my daughter had ended up having roosters, I don't think the people that complained to you wrote letters to you. They called you and says, hey, Kuno's having a rooster over there. Call him and get rid of those roosters. And that's what you did. You didn't, nobody wrote you a letter to complain about the roosters that my daughter kept on that property.
Well, you don't.
You know, so that's, that's less than five years back. But anyway, that was kind of where I was shooting at. So.
Yeah, you should, I agree that you should be able to do both. You should be able to make a call. You should be able to write a letter. But, you know, I think we have to continue to try and make sure that our citizenry has ways to get a hold of of the town government and make comments, make complaints, ask for help, whatever it may be. Adam, you've got some comments? Still muted. Can't unmute? Preston, can you see if you can unmute Adam? I'm not sure why that would be.
Yeah, either way, I can help with the lighting issue. That's. Pretty easy to correct in terms of what optics you have in there and kind of the orientation of where the lamps are positioned. So. I'll coordinate further with Preston on that.
Okay, and Terry, if you want to be involved in that as well, you're more than welcome. Anyone else want to? Add anything to this multifaceted discussion?
That there was one more point he had regarding that access to the high school.
Oh, right, right. I'm not sure what. Again, I think that's one for for Preston and staff to to note down. And. I know that for years, there was a path that went through. I don't know the names of the streets out there as well as I do the old streets in town. You could basically go up like, I don't know if it's Marion Overlook, basically right by your house, Terry. There's a lot to the east of your house, I believe, that people would walk through. Maybe it was your lot. I don't know.
No, it was, it was right there where you're describing because it's opposite from the path that comes up through River Park, open space, you know, and then comes up the two houses in the street. It doesn't continue.
Yeah, see, I, and I don't think we're in a position to condemn a portion of somebody's lot, especially when those lots aren't very big. What I think we really. Sorry, let me, let me finish. What I, what I think we really need to do is talk to the school and make sure that the students know that they should be walking on the sidewalks. And that shortcut is always desirable. But when it goes through somebody's private property, you just, you just can't do that.
Not just the students, it's the teachers and local adults with their dogs.
So I think I think it's an education thing. Now, now, maybe, maybe we can talk to somebody up there that would be willing to sell us a path through there. But I kind of doubt it because, as I said, the lots aren't very big. Nobody wants to give up a ten foot easement that people are going to be using all the time right next to their house. So I think there's, we have to look at other options. And mostly, it's, it's an education thing to get people to stop using a historic path that used to be on a vacant lot. It's not a vacant lot anymore.
The the basic situation with that story is, is I've been working with Jack with the HOA there, you know, the pedestrian easement that joins that through the green space was put in before the school was ever conceived of or built. And so they didn't plan for a pathway. So it's always been private property that's been used. It used to be my lot before I built. And then they used the lot to the west of me, which I owned, and I cut that off by fencing it. Now they're using the other one, which was fenced, and they cut the fence. So it's, you know, so it's, it's an issue that has to be dealt with with the HOA. There is actually utility easement there that could be used if only a small tiny piece of it could be acquired through some, some fashion. But I won't go into any more detail on that.
Steph, big note and looking at options, talk to the school, see what we can do. But thanks for your. Oh, Steph, big note and looking at options, talk to the schools, see what we can do. But thanks for your points.
Lighting, just real quick, uh, I have been working with Preston. The entire lighting situation in Ridgeway needs to be. Readdressed from San Miguel Powers' point of view. So we have been in in discussion on it. The the light that Kuno was mentioning was a replacement from what used to be a fifty watt high pressure sodium to a thirty watt LED, which saves the town. Money and then um Jeff Rivera put a dimmer on it, but apparently it's still not satisfactory. So it's a big issue that has to be addressed wholesale.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, hey, Kuno, I I apologize that um, you know, sometimes it doesn't seem as easy to get information out and you're asked to. To write a letter or to show up and comment in a meeting. Um, but one thing that's changed from the Old West is that um. We're not a bunch of like. We're not a homogenous group of town councilors, um, and that's a bonus for us in the not Old West. And as somebody with a full time job, um, that's not right here in Ridgeway, just down the road in the county, it's it's nice when we can get that letter or. Get that public comment here so that we can hear your comments. Um. You know, it's it's hard, would be hard to chase all of us, all seven of us down in one place outside of this this meeting. Um, so I know that's frustrating, but. When we get those letters or those comments in public places, all of us on council and the mayor can hear those comments. So thanks for sharing your thoughts.
Okay. You know, the Old West, so what about somebody stealing your water? I know stealing your wife is one thing, stealing your horse is another, but stealing water? What did we know about that?
We we were aware of that. I I'll let Steph um.
Yeah, thanks, Mary. I'll talk to that. And actually, Kuno, we spent an afternoon talking about this, but uh. So last summer got reports that someone up County Road five uh potentially may have been snagging water out of the Ridgeway ditch. Uh. Marshall Schmaltz and I spent uh a good uh, I don't know, twenty four hour period, uh, not consecutively, of course, but uh going door to door up there to. Uh, do some investigating. Uh, we did get to the bottom of it and it it was a uh just a large misunderstanding and we got the the ship righted. So I'll leave it at that, but we did get that uh addressed.
Thanks, Preston. Um. Yeah, and I think.
Thanks for taking my comments.
You're very welcome, always. Anyone else? All right, so that takes us on to public requests and presentations. Uh, this first one is um something I'm really happy to um. Have Preston introduce you to our new community initiatives facilitator. Um, as you all know, Deidre. Um, Silbert retired at the end of twenty twenty one. We had um some excellent candidates apply for the job. And we were just thrilled to get Tara Wick, Tara Couchman Wick, um, come on board, I think as of the um. Eighteenth of January, that um has our new community initiatives facilitator and I'll let Preston take it from there. Welcome, Tara.
You already got most of it, John, so thanks for that. Yeah, she started Tara started on on January eighteenth. Happy to introduce Tara to you all. Um, she's already hit the ground running. She's doing a fabulous job. Uh, so I wanted to take a few moments uh for you all to welcome her. And then uh for her to tell you a little bit about herself. So everyone say, welcome, Tara.
Welcome, Tara.
Yeah, tell us a little about yourself, Tara.
Okay, thank you so much, everybody, for the warm. Hi, thanks for the warm welcome. I felt so warmly welcomed by my colleagues and the volunteers and now you all. Um, so I come to this job after having spent most of my career in nonprofit management. Um, I worked for the last seven years. In philanthropy for the Colorado Trust. Before that, I worked in Montrose, um, leading the Live Well Montrose Olatha Coalition. Before that, I was living in Oregon in Portland and ran community gardens in public housing communities for about ten years. Um, so this is my, I had did work a year at a at the county health department in Oregon, but this is my first municipal job, so. I've got a lot to learn. I'm really excited to be here. Um, my heart is in community work, so this is just a wonderful fit for me in terms of. Facilitating community initiatives. Um, yeah, just thrilled to be here. I'll be working um in Town Hall Tuesday through Friday. So if you're around, feel free to swing by and say, hey, um, reach out to me if you'd like to check in about any of our work um promoting creative community. Economic vitality, um, anything along those lines. So thanks so much, Preston.
Thank you, Tara, and welcome aboard. I have been sharing a um something in the interview process when when we started interviewing Tara, who, by the way, was. Um, unbelievably prepared with a three ring binder and she'd read all the all the background uh documentation for the Creative District, Space to Create. I mean, she she was. Ready to to start the job that day and what but she started the interview with was a comment to say that if she had her dream job description. If she was just asked to to come up with a job description for her dream job, it would be community initiatives facilitators. So I thought that was really cool. Great example of her her passion for community and um I just think it's really exciting to have somebody so. Embedded in in community activism and and philanthropy and and everything. So. Again, welcome, Tara, and we look forward to having you onboard.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, so moving on to actually, anybody in the audience have any questions for Tara? Just always like to give the opportunity for the public to weigh in. I don't see anybody, so thanks for being here, Tara. That brings us to item number eight, presentation of an on idea for speed mitigation on Amelia Street by Lucy Booty. Lucy, I saw earlier, so uh and you guys have a document in your packet that talks about it, but um. Preston, should we just let Lucy take it away?
Yes, I think that works.
Great.
Hi, Lucy. Hi, thank you for the audience. Um. I've been on the corner of Amelia and South Elizabeth for moving on to six years now. And the speed is um not okay on Amelia Street and the adjacent streets. The access from County Road five to Sherman Street. Uh, people are in a rush. The fifteen mile an hour is irrelevant. Uh, it's dangerous. It's dirty and dusty. Um, and it's loud. So um until the town and the people. Agree on some kind of surfacing and landscaping, whatever its future is and even maybe on that, I'd like to propose that the town provide. Uh, planter troughs in the center lane to help reduce the uh speed. If the speed is reduced. The dust waves will be smaller and the noise should be reduced as well. Um, in your packets, I did a breakdown of the pricing for those uh troughs. And um. They come into about three hundred dollars each. Um, they are removable. They would have to be um replaced seasonally for the snow removal. Um, I'm proposing that they be slightly raised that so they can be picked up with a forklift. Um. And let's see, I have the the downside would be that they do need to be watered. I'm recommending a drought tolerant ornamental grass. That is deer resistant as well. Um, so there's watering. Um, and seasonal relocation. Those are the downsides that I can see and they don't come close to the pros. Of helping mitigate this dangerous speeding, dusty, noisy situation. Um. It's been done in Telluride and it's been very successful on the main street uh for speed reduction. And I would just like to get um. A thumbs up from the town or your input on what you think about this.
Thanks, Lucy. Um. What's everybody on council think about this proposal?
Think of that. I think it's a great idea. Add some color. Uh. You know, we've been talking about Amelia Street on and off for quite some time and uh. You know, the downside, I guarantee you, people are going to run into these things. Um, and that's going to be a problem. But. You know, from the surface of the idea, I just think it's a great idea to add some color, some plants, a little something to slow people down on Amelia. I'm in favor of it right up until people run into it.
Well, doesn't that mean they're driving too fast? I'm I'm sorry. At fifteen, like, come on.
Well, there's very few people that drive fifteen miles an hour on South Amelia Street. It's more like. Twenty-five is probably the average speed and above that.
And I think the ref I think Lucy referenced the um use of something similar in Telluride. And in recalling those particular planters, I think they may have had the um stock tanks, but they were they were um. Encased with a wooden structure that looks kind of attractive and gives a square platform for putting a speed limit sign or some sort of a warning sign. Grant cost more to do that, but you could just drop those things right into a rectangular box and make them a little more attractive.
I thought they were quite attractive as troughs. Um, they're very indigenous to the historic econo- economy. They're cattle.
The Old West.
You can't hurt them.
Just just throwing out there.
I think this is one of those things that, you know, we can't act on tonight. I would love some input from Public Works on what they think about picking them up and removing them and and watering and those bits. I think it's a great idea. It's a pretty. Low risk gamble situation, but you know, I'd like to hear from Shane and Public Works on what they think. Um, about it before we took some action.
I'd love to meet with anybody that I can help shed any light on. I was in Telluride in nineteen ninety-eight when they. Uh, did their streetscaping where they transferred the town from dirt streets to paved streets. So that involved. A myriad of issues that we are dealing with now. So any kind of mitigation until and even beyond. Uh, finalizing Amelia Street's future, I think this is affordable, immediate and simple.
Yeah, Lucy, I'm not I'm not saying I don't like it. I'm saying I want to hear from law enforcement in terms of, you know, what does it mean if people are running into them? How do we handle that? What does that entail? What does Public Works think? That's all.
Absolutely.
Um, anyone else?
I could make. I could make some special concrete corners for all those planters. So somebody that hits them is going to have to pay dearly for their mistake.
That's an interesting point. Uh, Russ?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think it's an interesting concept. Um, again, I'd like to. Get staff to weigh in on this at some point and, you know, I think they probably need to sit down and look at it and. But I, you know, just the logistics and how we do it, the concerns of running into it, where are we actually moving to? In the non-seasonal periods, those sorts of things. So, but I would I would like staff to weigh in and and get their intake or their input on it. I. It does seem like a pretty reasonable, relatively low cost idea.
You could stagger them east to west to make a maze out of it, really slow down traffic.
Yeah, make them cheeky, yeah.
That, I mean, my I I don't mean to be a a naysayer. I like the idea, particularly as Kevin said, I like the idea of the color. I like them on Main Street and Telluride. But uh, from my experience of driving Main Street and Telluride, what really makes the difference on the speed control there is their uh. Pedestrian maces, I think they call them. They're the raised crosswalks. Um. You you really have to put an obstacle in the lane to get people to slow down. I mean, I definitely think that. Like the bulbous downtown and anything that goes out into the lane tends to slow people down and that's the idea here. But um, as I mentioned before in uh. Addressing Kuno's comments, I think I think I really like the idea of the portable speed bumps. Um, because, you know, just making people have to slow down and stop to go over something that is otherwise going to damage their car. Is the ideal solution. I could see doing, trying to do both, maybe not doing as many planters, but do some uh portable speed bumps as well. Either the planters or the speed bumps are going to have to be removed in the winter when we're plowing, as as Lucy said. And when you think about how long winter is here, um, that's a major issue because for half the year. Neither of the solutions we're talking about would would be usable, so we have to come up with some other solutions for winter time. Um. I I think the important thing here is that we continue to have the discussions. We we continue to look into what. Solutions we can do and then implement something sooner than later and not keep just studying the problem, right? Um.
Well said.
Yeah, my point with this proposal is also that sooner than later, because to go. For even another summer with these tsunamis of dust is. Really bad.
Yep, yep. Well, we know we can't, if we do it, we can't do it until spring. Um, so we have a little time to talk to to Public Works and the Marshals Department and make sure they're okay with it. Um. And also, like I said, look into whether we could combine that with some of these portable speed bumps. Um. Anything we can do to get people to, excuse me, to get to the highway rather than drive the side streets as Kuno was talking about, but also drive that. Speed limit when they're on the side streets. So um, I really appreciate the the. Research you've done on this and the effort you put into putting this proposal together. I think it it has some real merits and uh. Staff will take it uh under consideration and and definitely call you if if um. Preston will give you a shout if he wants to have you come talk to Public Works or the Marshals Department about it.
I'd love to do that and I agree that the speed bumps would really help facilitate the whole concept. So thank you for your time, everybody.
Great, thank you.
Mary, if I Mary, if I can add just a couple of things, just.
Yeah, go ahead, Preston.
Uh, say I appreciate the sentiment of wanting to check with the Public Works crew and uh Shane and the Marshals Office on their thoughts. Um, I think we we need to look to Ron and Joanne as our engineers uh and the model traffic code to see what Amelia Street. Typically, this section of Amelia Street that Lucy's talking about, uh, and whether or not it can accommodate. Planters or something similar. I I would suspect there's, you know, a a section that could, but it it's narrow in some parts, so. There's some different elements here and uh Lucy and I sat down, when was it, a couple of weeks ago? And had a good conversation. So yeah, Lucy, I'll definitely follow up with you as we further explore this and we'll. It seems like everyone was nodding their head to have staff kind of look at this more and maybe come back. Uh, once we get like the collective assessment and maybe some options on on how to proceed here in the spring and summer months.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Great. And again, anybody in the audience want to make any comments or have questions? All right, thank you, Lucy. Moving on to item number nine, I believe, um. Under Policy Matters, Review and Action on First Amendment to Development Agreement between Lena Commons LLC and the Town of Ridgeway. We have that document in front of us. Um. Bo, you taking this one?
Um, I'm willing to take a uh first stab at it, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
So uh, this is a follow up uh from um the um council meeting in um. November wherein um the development team for Lena Street Commons uh approached the uh town council with respect to a request to. Amend the existing development agreement to change the allocation of units. Um, that would be deed restricted for a book for affordable housing. So. The original allocation is or was lot one E, lot four E and lot one B. And the shift is for lot one E, lot two E and lot three E. And I believe. Preston is in a position to share um in his screen with an exhibit as to what uh the modification looks like. Um, but the goal with this first amendment is to just um. Solidify and amend the existing development agreement based on the consensus that the council already provided with respect to. The desire to honor the request from the development team.
Um, so can everyone see my screen? This is a depiction of uh the original. Uh. Deed restricted units. See if I can pull up the other one. And this one is of uh the the, I guess, the proposed configuration all in the same building. And in line with what the conversation was back in November. And in line with what the conversation was back in November.
So thank you for that, Preston. Council, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Tom Kennedy is the Development Team's Council is also on the call, so I suspect he'd be in a position to answer any questions as well.
Anybody on council have any questions about this? We did go over this in November, as they said. While it wasn't absolutely our favorite solution, it certainly works in a lot of ways and we agreed to it, at least in concept at the time. So anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none, anybody in the audience have questions or comments or if there aren't any, Tom, do you want to add anything? Don't, I see a camera, but no, no microphone on Tom's name, so I'm not sure. There, I'm, seems like this is pretty straightforward. Is anybody in council feel otherwise?
No, this is just dot the i's and crossing the t's based on what we've already proved in November, so.
I think you said it perfectly, John. In fact, it might not have been everybody's most fantastic idea, but it, it does. It works.
Yeah, I think this is our for this project. I think it raises questions about how funding formulas for affordable housing get done and how, you know, we also did have a crazy event of twenty twenty and lumber prices and things were insane. So I think we just got to keep moving forward on this one, even though it wasn't ideal.
Yeah, there were a lot of moving parts here, and I guess for the, for the audience members that maybe aren't familiar with this situation, the, as Preston showed in that first screen that he put up, at least one of the other units was, yeah, was that unit one B? Is it? It's hard to read.
Yeah, I think it's one B.
But that's a unit that's now going to be worth upwards of nine hundred thousand dollars, and it's hard to imagine a nine hundred thousand dollar unit even, even coming down, down to seven hundred still isn't, isn't affordable. So moving all three into that E building ideally, we typically want them spread out more, but given the circumstances, I think it's the, the best we can, we can hope for. At least that's, that was our, that was our discussion, so. Again, anybody in the audience have any comments or questions? Anybody on council? If not, does somebody want to make a motion?
I move to approve the First Amendment to Development Agreement with Lena Street Commons.
All right, motion made seconded. All those in favor? Oh, please, sorry.
Council members back? Scrambley? Lakin?
Hi.
Skyler?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer?
Hi.
Okay, Agnes, I saw you turn your camera on. Did you want to address this issue at all? No, she's walked away. Okay, I think she probably just came on. All right, that takes care of that item, right?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Bo. That brings us to item number ten, Review and Action on Development Agreement between Alpine Homes Ridgeway LLC and the Town of Ridgeway. This is a similar, similar item. Again, Bo, you're going to kick this off for us.
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mayor. So just as we have an existing development agreement in place with, with Lena Street Commons, this is a proposed development agreement with Alpine Homes Ridgeway for the development of the project that's been referred to as Riverfront Village. There was the July Planning Commission hearing, a recommendation of approval for the Riverfront Village PUD and preliminary plat subsequent to that on November of twenty twenty-one. That council approved the development agreement, actually, the council approved the, the preliminary plat and PUD subject to getting a development agreement in place with some other additional conditions. So included in the packet is the development agreement, some of the kind of concessions that are being provided. Under this is that Alpine Homes Ridgeway, as the developer, is proposing four units of deed restricted housing for the town. The design and installation of an off-site sewer line to connect to development east of Highway five fifty. A perpetual easement to the town for pedestrian trail, a petest- perpetual easement for the installation of the Town of Ridgeway sign. Conversely, some of the things that the town is providing to Alpine Homes is townhouse dwellings in the GC District, conditional use for buildings over ten thousand square feet, conditional use for buildings up to thirty-five feet in height, and then conditional use for the building within the twenty-five to seventy-five foot setback of the overlay district. So that's the kind of white paper thirty thousand foot view of the development agreement. There's one outstanding issue which remains with respect to this development agreement, and it frankly ties into some of the conversations that we had with the previous agenda item as to what the proposed AMI would look like, area median income for those that would qualify for the deed restricted units. As of this submitted draft, that, that number and percentage is blank. So.
Is that something that we're to talk about filling in those blanks tonight or?
Yeah, I think, you know, the town kind of, from the staff's perspective, would be to, to really have somewhere in the hundred to hundred and twenty-five percent, I think that I'd turn it over to the Tom and the development team in terms of what their perspective is with respect to availability and ability to kind of construct the units based on, on that budget. And so I think that that's a component. But before we get there, I guess I'd kind of be willing to answer any questions that the, the council has with respect to the agreement itself.
Okay, thanks, Bo. It occurs to me that this is a really good example of what Vicky was talking about under the public comment section at the beginning of the meeting about it. Very lengthy document with a lot of legalese, but it's, this is the level of complexity that a development like this carries with it. So it's, you know, it's hard to boil this down to a couple of paragraphs, that's for sure. Everyone on councils had a chance to review it. I think there was a copy of the development agreement in the packet that anybody would have downloaded from the website. So I'll start with council. Anybody on council have any questions or comments either for Bo or for, I guess, I'll look, it looks like Jake Cantor is on. Maybe he could address any, any questions. Tom Kennedy's on as well. Lead on that. Hi there. Do you want to, I see you're on the phone. Do you have anything you want to add to what Bo already said?
Well, I, I agree with Bo's statement. We've gone through a number of issues with planning commission, town staff, town council, and there've been a number of things that have been identified, and a lot of them needed a landing spot, which is the reason for the development agreement. The employee housing, which we'll get to here in a second, was one of the topics. But there were a number of things that the applicant agreed to do as part of this process. You know, granting the easement for the access sign coming into town and easement for connecting to the east side of Ridgeway. A landing pad for that. We're, we're doing the trails. We're doing a number of other improvements. We've agreed to work with the town in granting an easement and actually installing a deep sewer line that serves east Ridgeway, which really doesn't do anything for our project. So there've been a number of things that we've been working through with the town in a cooperative manner. And we just needed a place to reflect those agreements and the mutual concessions from each parties as far as that's concerned. And it also creates some vesting rights for us. The way your process works is a project doesn't get vesting until you record the plat. The, the way that you want us to approach this is that we are required to put in a significant amount of infrastructure on the project at a very costly amount before we can record the plat. And we wouldn't have any vesting if you changed the code or something like that, which impeded the ability to do the project. So the development agreement also covers those vested rights, and that's one of the sections. But I think that the issue that we did want to talk about with you was in the employee housing section. And the deed restricted units, there are three of them, I'm sorry, there's four of them. And there's two one bedrooms and two two bedrooms. And we were proposing a, a certain percentage of AMI for each of those. And we spent a lot of time internally looking at the size of the units, what construction costs are these days, tried to design the units in a way that, you know, tries to allow us to be able to put them on the market at, you know, a reasonable pricing structure, which then ties into the AMI and, and the market that likely would be able to meet those pricing structures. And that's why we're asking for the percentages that the way they are. We, we'll, we'll look, these are going to be nice units. We'll try to be thoughtful in doing the finishes and, and they'll have all the same appliances in terms of, you know, dishwashers and kit and, and refrigerators and, and things of that sort. But we may look at trying to get a more economical model of each of those, again, for the purpose of trying to hold down price. But just with today's economy in the market and how construction costs are going, it, it's really challenging to try to be able to, you know, get the pricing in a way that we'll be able to meet, you know, the hundred percent or the hundred twenty-five percent AMI that Bo was, was identifying. We understand it's a real issue, but it's an issue on, on both sides. And so I, I, with that, I would turn it over to, to Michael Bennett. He's one of the, the members of the team that's involved in, in trying to think through, you know, the pricing side of this. So I'll turn it over to Michael, if that's okay with you.
That's fine. Welcome, Michael.
This is, this is Glenn Becker. I'm on the development team, working with Michael. So I can address, address that as well. And, and Tom did a good, a good job framing it up. But really, the, the thing that's driving this and how we looked at it was, you know, what are the construction costs? Okay, and then, and then we added the minimum three percent development fee, the construction costs. And then we then backed into an AMI calculation on what could, what could afford that. And you know, what we've, we've really, we've talked with our GC at length, and these are their numbers, and they're, they're out on they're bidding out other jobs around state and, and the country, and they've seen a ten percent increase in construction prices since this past fall of twenty twenty-one. So you get rising construction costs, and then the other piece of the puzzle is interest rates. And all projections are to that they're going to be, you know, in twenty twenty-three, when we're, when we're selling or, or we're selling out on this, you know, interest rates will be up a whole percentage point from three point seven to four point seven five. So the, Michael, if you want to go to the, to the next, we just, the next slide. So here's the process that we did. And again, we have, we have two, two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom units that are deed restricted. We went through the pricing. You can see the square footage is, is they're on the smaller side of the market. And they're comparable to, to other, you know, projects in Ridgeway. So we can't go, we can't go, you know, less on the square footage, really. It would not be marketable. And added, added the three percent developer fee and got to these costs for the two-bedroom and the one-bedroom. And so then the next step we did was looking at the AMI calc which this is, this is a sensitivity. Looking at a hundred percent to a hundred and fifty percent. And we would, we would, we would love to be at a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five percent. I mean, it, it's really what's, what's dictating the price is the cost. And so as you can see here, it's sort of a sensitivity. You can see how at a hundred percent AMI, it's, it's well below the cost of each unit. And then the, the, the last last slide, Michael, if you could put that up. Again, this is, this is sort of comparing it to today's interest rates. So this is like an interest rate sensitivity that we looked at. And, and as you can see, today's rates, three point seven average at a hundred thirty percent AMI, it's five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars purchase price. But if interest rates go up as projected to four point seven five, it's for, you know, it drops to four hundred and under sixty, so that's, that's a good, you know, fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars difference. So again, and we don't, we don't want to project an AMI that's going to be unrealistic. And it's not ideal. That was mentioned earlier in the meeting. The only thing we can do.
I, I just have one quick question. Two or three slides ago, it looked like the one bedroom was more than the two bedroom. Why is that?
That, 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 that's, that's a good question. I, I, I had the same question when we got the pricing from a general contractor. And basically, it's there different buildings. Okay, so the the one bedrooms are on a two-story building. And the two bedrooms are located in a three-story building with garage parking underneath. So the buildings, there's stairs, the higher you go, it's, it's, the foundation's bigger, it's more costly. And, and that's what flows through down to the unit, the unit pricing. Excuse me.
Which just seemed odd to me, but I guess that makes sense. So it looks like what you're saying is that the while we were hoping for a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five percent AMI, we're probably going to be forced to accept a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty percent AMI. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that's, that's the conclusion we, we came to. And again, it's being totally driven by construction pricing and, and the pricing of the units. And, and again, we can, you know, if interest rates don't rise, then, then, you know, we would go down, and we would go down on the AMI, couldn't be able to do that.
The, the way the development agreement is set up, so when we're done with the construction, then we sit with the town manager and we run through what our costs are. We, we open book it, we show, you know, what, what the costs are, what, what portion of the overall purchase of prices. What, what portion of the overall purchase of prices attributable to the units? And, and it's a back and forth conversation where we're justifying what the cost is and then what the price is. And the development agreement contemplated that we wouldn't be able to obtain a 10% or more than a 10% profit, you know, on top of what the costs were. But it also then put a floor in of the 3%. That's, that's what the, the, the guys were mentioning earlier, just so you knew the context of that. Cause the spirit of your housing program is that somebody isn't build housing and losing money. So based on those factors and formulas and that, you know, the review of the costs and expenses. We're, we're just thinking in advance what that's going to look like and then applying the AMI factor to it and coming up with the percentages that we think would work under those circumstances.
Anybody on council have questions?
Seems like he's not keeping up with inflation.
Yeah, it's, um, not exactly a buyer's market, that's for sure.
What is our AMI now? And obviously that could change, that'll change in a year, but where are we at?
It was showing the 2021 at seventy-seven, seven hundred.
Yeah, and not, I mean, I don't know exactly what the sourcing is on that. Uh, the town, we have some kind of outdated Yarra County numbers from, from two thousand and nineteen. That we'd be, we'd be happy to circulate. I think that that's a somewhat of a component in terms of making sure that both staff and the development team are on the same page of what AMI kind of formulation and, and calculation that we're using, but I wouldn't say that the numbers that have been provided by the development team this, this evening are too far off from what our, our numbers and projections would be from what our numbers and projections are from two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah, that, no, that, that was adding up with what I was seeing on Freddie Mac and I was searching really quick. And so I'm assuming that's, is that for one person or is that a household? What is that number based on? Sorry, I'm just trying to picture who, who is a hundred and thirty percent? Where does that fall? Who are we hitting?
Yeah. And I mean, again, those are, those numbers are from the developer, so defer to them a little bit, but I mean, we can take kind of combined, you know, is it a two-person household? Is it a one-person household? Based on, you know, one bedroom, two bedroom, whatever that might look like. I, I mean, I will say that the agreement contemplates that a cap of up to, right? So potentially that could be driven down, but um, and to Tom's point, you know, it's envisioned that sit down and true up all the numbers, um, when it's done, but it becomes a really difficult, I, I mean, it becomes really difficult to, I think frankly, find people that would qualify based on that, that higher percentage.
I mean, I feel like that number starts to throw out anyone in public service that, you know, you're not talking police, you're not talking about teachers, you're not talking about, you know, it's just, it's a very, it's a very interesting point in our economy when you start talking about a hundred and thirty percent of AMI.
You're kind of talking about the missing middle at that point.
And like, you know, it's, it's not a bad thing to have deed restricted housing in that, you know, right at AMI amount. There's, that's not the end of the world, but when we have people look at us and say, well, yeah, there's deed restricted housing, but I haven't been able to afford any of it. That's a problem.
Kind of looks like our hands are tied a little here though.
Yeah. So I mean, I, I think that that's kind of just to refocus, if I may, I think that, you know, the AMI conversation is from staff's perspective, really the, the only other outstanding issue with respect to the development agreement. The agreement itself, it, it, as Tom indicated, it's a, at a landing point or a place where we can capture some of the other concepts that we hit upon with respect to the preliminary plat approval and things that don't necessarily belong on a plat note. Um, so with that, I guess, you know, would want to make sure that there's a comfort level from staff with respect to the other components of the development agreement and see if there's any questions that would be presented. And then with that, it seems like at least from our perspective, the outstanding issue is this AMI percentage.
Well, and I guess there's a part of me that would like to buy some time on filling in those blanks, um, somehow. Cause we really don't know what, what the landscape's going to be in 2023 when these are done. I guess there's something to be said for locking us in at a certain level so that it doesn't go higher. I see Joel Cantor's hand up. Joel, you want to weigh in?
Hey, John, how you doing? Yeah, I've been, I've been having conversations with different folks about AMI to understand, you know, what it is and, you know, I've come to the same conclusion that the prices are running away from everybody, you know, not only from us as a builder, but from the buyer's standpoint. You know, the forward, the word, uh, affordable is, nothing is affordable now for a fireman or a teacher or anything because the, the, the raw costs of, are so expensive. I guess the terminology now is more what is attainable. Um, and with interest rates rising, the mortgage payments are going to start going up too. That's going to put further pressure on affordability. You know, I just told my crew, it's like, you know, the sooner we start and try to lock in some construction prices. Cause it's only going to get more expensive in the future, you know, and we have to pass those costs on. You know, our borrowing costs are going to go up as well, you know, fifty basis points, half a percent. Um, you know, I think that the town could consider uh, if there's a, a building, if there's what other fees that relate to those three or four, uh, deed restricted units. Waive those fees so the total cost aggregation, you know, when they're trued up and those units will be less. And therefore the town would sort of be subsidizing those units a little bit for their target buyer, you know, a school teacher. The town could probably even waive them, wait to waive them. So, you know, if a school teacher, get more specific, if a school teacher or a fire first responder buys those units, the town will credit the developer for the pro-rata share of the building permit or other fees to lower the cost, you know, calculation on those units. That's just something to consider. I mean, it doesn't really matter to us. Yes, sir.
Joel, the, the, the development agreement does provide for that already. We've been working together on trying to keep the, the, the cost and the resale price as low as possible. And we appreciate the work of the town. It really is driven by the AMI, which you guys, you know, have, you know, you're, you're working with, I don't know what influence you have on figuring out and, and establishing and setting that at what it is. And, and we're, we're very sensitive to the cost side of it. And that's why I included language in the development agreement that calls for us to sit with, like I said earlier, the town manager to review the cost to make sure there's not any kind of fat or other hitting things in there for the same reason of trying to make these attainable.
Yeah. Well, John, another thing to consider and it's your, it's up to you all, is that you could make specifically these three units. You could allow those local buyers the right on a limited basis to rent them out when they're on vacation, like a short-term rental exclusion. You know, a lot of these folks go out of town and travel in the summer or in the winter and they could, you know, make some money by leasing their place up and then offset their costs and make them more attractive to them.
You have that provision. I'm a teacher. I can rent my house in the summer. It's my primary residence. So we already have that provision.
So to be clear, the short-term rental of the units is prohibited.
Yeah, it can't be short.
Oh, of the ones? Okay.
But it, you know, could be, could be, it, short-term is anything less than thirty days. So if you go away for the summer, you could rent it for three months and that would qualify.
Yeah, that's true. Or you could consider, you know, a limited short-term rental for these three units at the time.
Well, that would take, uh, edit to this document.
I guess I, I don't know. I mean, I think we're, we're not, we're talking about teachers not being able to qualify. I'm a teacher with eight years experience and a master's degree. This is them not even like being in the ballpark of getting to the point where they could leave for the summer and short-term rent it.
No, I think that that's a, a really good point, Beth, with respect to, I mean, when you go to the bank to get a loan, you say, well, my plan is short-term rental. That's not going to necessarily allow you to qualify. So
You know, someone who was on the tipping point and feeling like it was a stretch, but their bank said they qualified, that's a different thing than, you know, I'm twenty-seven thousand dollars under
I know, it's, it's completely insane. I mean, the prices of, you know, these are not really that fancy units. They're not sub-zero refrigerators and you know, they're not that fancy, but you know, building codes, they have to be built right and you know, we just get the price from the contractor and it is what it is, you know, we, we've been trying to chop off the price, but you know, we've been looking at zero escaping the landscape.
Yeah, it's, it's not a, it's not like the develop, I think you guys are doing anything. It's just, you know, I'm kind of feeling like we're charged by our community to find some affordable housing and we're trying to and we're running into this.
Well, what, what Tyride does, they started a housing trust fund for people that donate money into here and it, they give you down payment support. So if the down payment is typically three percent, so let's say units five hundred thousand, just for round numbers and the down payment's fifteen thousand dollars. That this housing trust will give you, you know, fourteen thousand dollars, make it easier to get in there. You know, so, give you money to move, uh, you know. I mean, I'd probably be willing to kick in some charitable money myself and down payments to these buyers for these, for these three units. You know, I'd probably kick in, you know, ten thousand dollars each, uh, towards the down payment. You know, in cash. So, cause if I lower the price ten thousand, that's not going to help them in terms of their down payment, right? So, I mean,
Yeah. So, I mean, it's four units, but, um, yeah, I, I think that that, that generosity is awesome. I don't know that if we reflect that in this agreement or what. Uh, just quickly, I mean, Tyride's got a real estate transfer tax assessment. That's, you, that, you know, primarily what funds their deed restricted affordable housing. And that's something that we can't even put to the, a ballot question to the voters if we wanted to, so.
Yeah, yeah. No, this is, well, yeah, like Tyride built the Sunny Side Development up here, which is kind of similar to this project we're talking about. Twenty-nine units with Allison Construction in Ridgway and that's, and that's costing them like four hundred dollars a foot. And they're, they're selling them for, you know, basically less than its cost to build. But they're paying it from that, you know, housing mitigation fund, which is every building permit has to pay like a hundred thousand dollars extra into their, into their slush fund. But even those Yeah, they got the land for free. Yeah. So that, that was four dollars a foot without the land for free. And so, you know, I had to pay for the land, then, you know, you know, this land was like, cost me the eight hundred thousand, which was a good deal for the land. And then I spent a million dollars already on engineering and, you know, all this, you know, I want legal, not too, too much legal fees actually, Tom. You've been okay. But, um, you know, it's just a hard, it's a hard thing. So I think the best way to do it is that, you know, a first-time home buyer can put down as little as three percent. And assuming they don't have money from their parents and they've got to come up with say twenty thousand dollars, you know, if they could get half their down payment covered by the developer. As long as the town approves that this person is a legitimate teacher, uh, and or a first responder in the community, then I'd be happy to, to do that. And I could, you know, deduct it as a charitable contribution. They would get in there and their payments, but they would still have to qualify for their mortgage payment. And assuming the rates don't bump up too fast, too much, then, you know, I think it should work, you know, but we're not going to make any money off those units for sure. I mean, that's an automatic. You know, it's, there's just no profit there.
So Mayor, it, it seems, I mean, it, it seems like kind of in the last slide that we saw kind of a, a proposed number of, of maybe even a hundred and thirty AMI. I'm wondering if, if we don't kind of for the purposes of tonight's meeting, if the council's willing to go to one twenty-five, maybe use that as the baseline. And then as we just saw with the previous agenda item, if, if those numbers aren't working and not successful, they could come back and after, you know, they had an opportunity to get their, their plat in place and, and proceed with construction costs, come back and you know, really provide some, some truer numbers and, and, and allow for a subsequent conversation on this.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, that makes, that's, that's logical.
So, um, I was suggesting that we fill in those A and B numbers on section three dot four at one twenty-five percent. And then just know that we'll revisit that when we've got actual construction costs on paper. Is that right?
Uh, yeah, ultimately it's a council decision, but that's kind of my suggestion to get some pro, progress on this, right?
Yeah, and I, I would encourage you, Joel, to look into how you might structure that, uh, very generous donation you're suggesting for, for teachers and first responders or whatever. I mean, I think we need to have a discussion about what exactly that means, whether it's potential like public works employees as well, things like that.
Yeah. Well, well, I'm thinking, John, we should probably get together and start like entire, I just, uh, they're called the Ridgway Housing Trust. Where people can make donations and I'll make the kickoff. Maybe I'll do like a matching up to like fifty thousand dollars or something. You get other people and then you can fill, you can, you can, you know, fill in the criteria with Bo in the, in town of, you know, people would apply. How they qualify. And then, you know, you, you'd have the money sitting in a, in your, you know, Alpine Bank, the town would, and they could just kick in that money at closing. You know, I don't want to be involved to make sure picking the person. So I'd rather just give the donation to the C three, you know, charity. And a Ridgway Housing Trust, uh, Ridgway Affordable Housing Trust would be a great thing, I think. And I'd be wanting to kick in the first thing, you know, the first donation and maybe we could have a matching campaign. So you can start with a hundred thousand dollars and cause you're going to need the money for other projects and other housing elsewhere. So you know, I, I think that'd be pretty good to, I think a good way to approach it.
Certainly something to explore. What's the feeling of council? Where are we at on this?
Yeah, um, yeah. I like both suggestions and I, I like the idea of exploring the trust fund. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't really see another way forward, actually. So I, I think the trust fund's a good idea and, and we start with the one, one twenty-five, I think we were looking at, and then, and then relooked at when we've got total costs.
Yeah, actual numbers are close to actual numbers would be, yeah, as, as close as we can get would be nice.
All right. Um, I see Jake's hand up. Jake Nice.
I just a, a quick plug, uh, to let you know that the Home Trust of Yarra County, which is a five oh one C three, exists and could be a potential vehicle.
I was going to mention that, Jake. Thanks for chiming in. We already have a in, in existence. It's a countywide effort, but certainly they're, they're a potential entity to serve the purpose here.
But maybe, John, you might, maybe Ridgway wants that more control just in the you know, I'll let you decide, but I'm willing to contribute either way, you know. But I would sort of want to earmark the money to make sure people can afford these four units initially, right?
I think there's potential for creating a, a sort of a sub-fund under their auspices that could be just for Ridgway.
Yeah, that's, that's, look at that. Let me know and I'm ready to go. It's, it's a good, it's a good cause and certainly gonna, I mean, I, this whole project was designed to try to provide, you know, affordable housing, more attainable housing. Um, you know, we didn't want to make it too fancy. We didn't want to look janky because it's at the entrance of the town. It's at a critical place in the town entry. And everybody's going to see it, including all my friends and my wife. It has to look great, you know, uh, but we can't make it so fancy that the price is too high. And once you get over a certain price, then all you're going to be doing is selling it to people from Houston and Dallas. And that's not what, that's not what we want. So, you know, it's a, it's a tricky wicket. We're trying to thread the, thread the middle here, you know, but. But we'll get it, we'll get it done. And I don't, I don't think we're going to make much money on it. Honestly, I'm making more money in the pot shop that I bought next door than this one. Um, be honest with you, uh. So.
Uh, so Bo, is there anything else that, that was the main crux of it?
That was kind of the last point that we had up to subject still to negotiations. So. Nothing, again, the development team's here and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have on. The proposed development agreement, but I feel like we're at a pretty good spot after frankly, months of negotiation on this and other issues.
I agree. All right. What's the feeling of council? Somebody want to make a motion or have any other questions or comments?
No other questions. I'll, uh, go ahead and move to approve the development agreement with, uh, between the town of Ridgeway and Alpine Homes Ridgeway LLC.
Second.
With the.
With the AMIs at one twenty-five. Um, agreement to relook the AMIs once costs are in. And, uh, and to look into the development of, uh. Or, or use of a, an existing trust. Company.
Um, did I hear somebody second that?
Terry.
But I gotta mute my dog there.
So Terry, you're, you're seconding his, uh. Amended motion, his adjusted motion. Okay. Um, motion's made and seconded. Uh, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Beck.
Hi.
Grambley.
Hi.
Lakin.
Hi.
Skylar.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Hi.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for your hard working on this, hard work on this. I know it's been a long road. Um. Thank you to staff and thank you to the development team for all your, your work on it moving forward. Uh, I believe item number ten is the one we, or eleven is the one we pulled off. Is that correct, Preston?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that takes us to number twelve, the Ridgway Area Chamber of Commerce Presentation. On Marketing and Promotion Activities and Financial Status. Ashley, welcome.
Thank you, John. Um, hi, everyone. I have Adam Dubrav here with me, who is our president of the RACC Board, uh, taught me to do this presentation this evening. Uh, we're happy to present the twenty twenty-one annual report and also a proposal for our twenty twenty-two, uh, budget request, which. Uh, was sent to town last week. So I, uh, hope that the council was able to look through that. Um, I'm going to go ahead and try to share my screen so that you guys can see the report while Adam. And I kind of go through it real briefly and then we'll be open for questions. Um, and I'll look at the budget afterwards if that works for everyone. Uh, so it's not actually allowing me to share the screen.
Have to get permission.
I know already.
Preston, can you? Give her permission for that?
Yeah, Ashley, you should have permission. Uh, you just have to select the actual screen you want to share. If, uh, worse comes to worse, I can bring it up and just navigate it for you. Just let me know.
Okay. Um, Preston, I might for, uh, saving time. Have you pull that up if you're able to?
Yeah.
Blocking my system preferences for some reason. So thank you.
Oh yeah, there's, there's a thing in system preferences you have to allow under security. More trouble than it's worth at this point.
I might need to get help on that, John, sometime. Thanks.
Got all the Apple experts here.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. So this is our twenty twenty-one annual report. Do you want to start, Adam?
Sure. Um. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Adam Dubrav, lived in town for, uh, twenty-two years. And, uh, became a member of the board almost two years ago. And, uh. We've gone through some changes, uh, this past fall and, uh. Ashley, uh, became executive director in October. And, uh, David, Nun and myself, uh, became, uh, David became vice president and I became president. Of the chamber in December. And we are, uh. Tasked with, uh, building on the successes. Of our predecessors, uh, Tim Patterson, Jason. And Hillary, who you guys know, they've done a great job and, uh. I, uh, want to compliment Ashley and Tanya for doing all the work they did on this report that you guys have received. So we're, we're, uh, building our team and, uh, working on, uh. Going forward here and just to. Highlight what, what's in the annual report. Uh, and, and what, uh, our predecessors have worked on and grown year after year as a website. Uh, the Ridgway Colorado dot com website that, uh. I, I think is a, a great website, but we're looking to, uh, improve upon that and, uh, optimize the site in, uh. Twenty, uh, twenty-two. That's a big part of our strategy and, uh. The, uh, visitor's guide, it has been a constant as well, uh, in the, the night sky. Then, uh, dark sky recognition is, is, uh, was on the cover. If you guys saw that before. It's a beautiful cover, great picture and, uh, our, uh, nighttime sky is, uh, really special here. So, uh, we look forward to doing more marketing to promote that. And so the visitor guide has been a staple. Uh, we're going to continue with that. And of course. As, uh, all of you have had much more interaction with Hillary and, uh. Now with Ashley on the visitor center, uh, I don't know, uh, how many of you have been over since it's been renovated. But, uh, that's where Ashley and I are right now. Uh, and we look forward to, uh. Getting a new team here this summer, uh, to help staff that. Uh, I, I met with, uh, students, uh, this past week, uh, or last week, uh, through advisory. To educate them more on what we're doing here and hopefully we could get, uh, some local students involved with the chamber. Uh, and, uh, so look forward to that. The, a- along with the youth, the volunteer and career fair, uh, really, really looking to, uh. Educate kids more on what a wonderful community that they live in and how they're a big part of it and can make a difference. So, uh, that, that, that's something, uh, that I, uh, want to focus on personally. And, uh, uh, we, the volunteer and career fair, if any of you have been to that, it's a, a great program and. Uh. Nice way to interact with the school. In this past year, the chamber, uh, took on the Noel Night that, uh, was a success. And, uh, we, we look forward to building on that some more for next year and getting out in front and, and doing more with that. And also the shop local program. Those are programs to help drive winter business that all the businesses in the area. You know, with, with, it's one, one of the themes that we're going to work on is to, uh, drive more winter business, uh, for the community. And. I, I would say generally, uh, as it has been for you, you know, for the businesses in the area working through the pandemic. Has certainly been an unusual time and, uh, you know, how we go forward. Uh, and navigate, uh, this, uh. These strange conditions and, uh, help grow, uh, the, you know, or help the businesses, uh, be sustainable. Uh, uh, we, we want to help everyone do that and, uh. Part of our optimization of the, the website and we're, we're going to learn ourselves more. About, uh, online marketing and we want to share our, the knowledge that we gain with the business community. So, uh, not only do we help drive the chamber, uh, traffic, uh. Through the website, but also for any businesses that are interested, we could help share that knowledge with them as well. Uh, but with that, I, I'd say that's a. A nickel overview and not to take up too much of your time, but be happy to answer any questions about the report or the budget that you might have.
Thanks, Adam. Um, and Ashley. Anybody on council have any questions, comments? I think the chamber continues to show that they're an excellent partner with the town to cover, uh. The, uh. Visitor services side of things and, uh. Seem to be doing a great job, even with the transition of personnel. Um.
Congratulations to Ashley.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Ashley, again, and, uh, we, we look forward to working with everyone and, uh. Uh, you know, he- helping, uh, represent Ridgway the way we all would like to see it, you know, represented.
I'm sorry to see Jeannie stepping down as the visitor center manager. She's, she's done an incredible job. Have you got somebody? In the wings to take on her position or?
I've met with Jeannie a few times, but we don't, just in that transition, kind of exchanging that knowledge. Um, I'm not really sure how that's going to look. Um, this upcoming season for the visitor center quite yet. So we still need to kind of talk that over with the board in the next couple of months.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I see Val has his hand up.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Val.
Yeah, 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 John, and, uh, council, I, I just wanted to, um. Commend the rack on their promotion of dark skies in the area. Is that, uh, I think they did a great job with, with adding, uh, significant content to their website and also that, that, uh, guide. Um, the, the guide for twenty-two. Um, and also if they provided some input to, um, the Colorado Tourism Office promoting Ridgway and it's. It's a special asset of, of dark skies in the area and at a top, top of the pines, which is actually fairly special as well. So, uh, I, I do want to. Point that out and commend them on, on, uh, on all the great, the great promotion.
Thank you.
Good point. Uh, anyone else have comments or questions either in the audience or appearing council? Sounds like everybody's pretty happy with what we've been presented. I believe we need to have a motion to, uh. Accept their, their budget request. Is that right, Preston?
I didn't hear that last part. Say that again.
I believe we need to have a motion to, um. Adopt their, their budget request, right?
Uh, that is a good question. I hadn't, hadn't even thought that through. It may be good to reflect that for the record, um, given that they are proposing to use the lot, the lot funds this way. So.
I, I think it would be, if nothing else, gives them a, a show of support from the council. So.
I'll move to it. Accept the budget as presented. Second that.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Pam has stepped away, so let's see if I remember your names. Uh, council members Grambley.
Uh, I.
Beck.
Hi.
Lakin.
Hi.
Skylar.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Hi.
How do I do?
Great job.
Incredible. All right. Yeah. Thanks again, Adam and Ashley for great presentation and continual good work on behalf of the town at the chamber.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you this coming year.
Absolutely. Can't wait. Thanks again. All right. That takes us to item number thirteen, which is the. Review and action on lease agreement between the town of Ridgway and the Ridgway Community Garden for the use of a portion of Green Street Park as a community garden. I believe this is due to a change in their sponsorship and their five oh one C three status. Preston?
Yes, sir. That's, that's, uh, partially right. Also, the, the current agreement is, uh, expiring very, very soon. So, uh, Ridgway Community Garden is now. As you said, an IRS recognized five oh one C three tax exempt organization. Really cool for them. Uh, they are requesting a, a long-term lease of, uh, just over. Uh, an acre parcel at Green Street Park where they've operated a community garden, uh, since I think May of twenty nineteen. Um, like I said, the current lease expires, uh, in less than ten days on the seventeenth. Um, and I've been working with Agnieszka, uh, who I think is here. She was here earlier. I think she's here this evening. Um, she's the board president of Ridgway Community Garden. I've been working with her to get a new lease agreement prepared, uh, for you all to consider. That's, uh, the version that's before you now. Um, the memo goes into, uh, some further background, uh, information about how the community garden, uh, has gotten to this point. There's a slideshow attachment that Agnieszka, uh, will run through, I believe now. So with that, I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, Preston. Good evening.
Welcome, Agnieszka.
Um, I will share my slides. Um, as Preston mentioned, the priority for, um, me chatting with you tonight is to. Request an extension to our lease. We've had a six-year lease and, um, that expires in February seventeenth. Um, but I wanted to give you a quick update on what we've been up to at the garden. Uh, since twenty nineteen, we, the lease actually started in twenty sixteen, but we didn't do any improvements on the site until late, uh, twenty eighteen. Can you all see my slides?
Yep.
Okay. Great. Um, so the mission of the community garden is and has been, it's pretty basic. It's to provide infrastructure. Resources and education to garden members of all ages involved in the growing and harvesting of nutrition or nutritious organic produce. We have three primary goals, which are pretty straightforward. Production or growing in a community setting. Education or mentorship to our members in the community and community partnerships. Uh, here's a quick timeline. Um, so the Ridgway Community Garden has been in existence since two thousand and seven and to, until. Twenty twenty-one, we've been operating under the Southwest Institute of Resilience, um, under the, um, wings of Chris Holstrom. And that garden operated on South Laura Street on private property until twenty fourteen. We then had to move, um, and we engaged with the town of Ridgway to try to identify a more long-term permanent location for the garden. Um, so we relocated to Green Street Park and we opened and started operations again in twenty nineteen. We are currently finishing a six-year lease and we would really like to see, uh, long-term commitment from the town of Ridgway, um, at least ten years. We prefer twenty years, which is what is currently in the lease agreement, uh, before you. We are, um, completely financially stable. We're supported by grants, local donors and rental fees from our garden members. Um, and last year we subleased a portion of the one point one acre property to Ridgway Community APRE. So until last year, we were led by, um, steering committee, um, made of more or less six members over time. Yeah, trying to go to the next one. Here we go. So where are we now? Um, this is RSCG going forward, starting this year, like, um, as Preston mentioned, we were just approved. By the ARS to be our own tax exempt organization. Um, and we're following all the steps for that. We're registered with the Secretary of State, have an EIN. Have our own insurance now and the town of Ridgway has been added as an additional insured, which meets the terms of the lease agreement. And we now have a board of directors. Uh, currently I'm the president. Um, Chris Lance, who's on this call is the vice president. I believe Judy's also on the call, uh, Judy Chamberlain. She's our treasurer. Amy Quadry is our secretary. Amy Quadri is our secretary and we have through three new board members, Dave Peterson, Doug Anfug and Jennifer Franz. And we plan to support the APRI going forward. Our agreement is to be determined and they're in the process of deciding whether they will remain under swirl or become a program of the community garden. So just to refresh your memory, going back, the Ridgeway Community Garden participated in the community planning process to identify its home, which eventually resulted, resulted in the Green Street Park Master Plan that was signed and adopted in 2015. This was the conceptual design at the time for the seven acre park with the green street with the community garden space allocated to the northern portion of that park. So pretty, this is about 1.1 acres. And this is what it looks like currently. So this is what the orange boundary is the one acre that we're leasing from the town of Ridgeway. We are focusing on developing the northern half acre. And what's in existence there currently are 50 raised beds. A perimeter wildlife fence. We have a storage shed, two shade tents, a main pathway, a new compost area, wash station, information kiosk. We are connected to town water and we are very thankful for town's support and that effort for extending the utility, the water lines to the garden as well as constructing the gravel parking area that allows access to the garden. Last year, we served 85 adults and 52 children and that's directly. We also had produce donations and partnerships with other organizations. This yellow box to the south is the 80 foot by 80 foot area that the APRI is currently subleasing from us and it's surrounded by an electric fence and an outer safety fence. Last year, they established 13 hives. And our MOU currently permits a maximum of 50 hives. And they do utilize some of the water from the garden that we have a water flow meter placed on it. So they divert some water and help to pay those costs. This is the garden in action. The top photo shows you what it looks like in the spring when we prep all the beds. We've developed this system with a lot of input from our master gardener, Chris Lance. We had to devise these low tunnels. There's a lot of, we experienced a lot of strong winds and really low temperatures even in August. But regardless, our efforts are fruitful because the south, the, the photo on the bottom shows you what the garden looks like in midsummer. Last year, that produce was basically busting out of those low tunnels. So we've had really great years. There's a few more slides demonstrating that we have membership really that spans all ages. We have little people running around helping their parents. We have retirees. We have families. We have singles. It's been a really great place for the community to connect, to problem solve and figure things out, how to grow produce in that high elevation, very challenging growing environment. These are the fruits of our harvest. As you can see, we grow all kinds of things from squash to carrots, a lot of greens. There are flower gardens, sweet peas, broccoli, turnips. Let's see what else. Japanese poppies, I believe, here on the left, beets, squash again. Very productive. And this is our newest addition last year. It's a sunken sand pit for the kids. It's a great place for them to keep themselves busy when they lose interest in gardening. This will, we will expand on this going forward, adding sensory features and potentially some growing bags for the youngsters. So that's our production side of things. We also engage in partnerships. We've been super lucky and grateful for partnerships with the Ridgeway Secondary School. The industrial arts students initially in 2019 built our original 43 beds and the shop class just across the way. And they've been coming back every spring and fall with the outdoor education classes and biology classes to help with composting, prepping more beds and doing routine maintenance, like spreading wood chip, weeding, et cetera. It's been a great partnership. Last year, we were also fortunate to serve Voyager Youth Program. They had a raised bed and the summer enrichment program made routine trips to the garden to maintain and grow. Our other partnership that's really key is with WIC, the Women Infant and Children's Program. And this is, this is Amy Erickson, who works directly with a few families every year to get them starting on gardening and mentoring them in best practices. And we also support the Ura County Food Pantry where garden members are welcomed and invited to share their extra produce or whatever they would like to share with the food pantry. To the point where we think that the food, we've inspired the food pantry to dedicate a group of their volunteers to steward their own garden beds next year. And then the third goal is education mentorship. So we really, Chris is amazing at this. She not only connects people, but she gives them the tools and best practices to be successful at what they do. Generally, in the past, we've had held in-person workshops at the garden on different topics. There however, was a silver lining to COVID when we couldn't do that in person because Chris generated a library of short videos that are now available online to our gardeners and anyone on the web that's interested in look, in learning from her. So what's next for the community garden? As we move forward, we would like to revitalize and do some capacity building among our membership. With all our energy sucked up into building the key infrastructure for the garden and then the restrictions of COVID, we would like to, we kind of had to put a pause on what we used to do at Laura Street, which was a lot of potlucks. Cooking classes, all kinds of cool fun social events. So we're looking at putting more energy into that. And then also planning for the second phase of build out to fill in some of these empty spaces in the north half acre of the property. So in the next two to five years, we will be looking at expanding the children's area, potentially putting in elevated beds that you can garden at by standing or sitting in a chair. Flowering beds, per from a culture, maybe art installations. Beyond that, we don't have a long-term plan. I think we're going to let the community and our membership inform us what they would like to see. I can say that at the moment, over the last few years, we've been meeting the community demand for beds. So we've been able to accommodate everyone that's interested in gardening. If that grows, then that would be an opportunity to expand into this southern portion. So that's my quick presentation. And yeah, we're at just at the position where we would like to really continue partnership with the with the town of Ridgeway and request a longer term lease. We've met all the terms of the previous lease and feel like we've been really good stewards of the community garden and provided viable and really important services. And quality of life. Had a quality of life impact in our community.
Wow, thanks, Agnieszka. It's so inspiring to see what, what you guys have done out there. I know there was a lot of angst and a bit of hand wringing about what would happen when the former community garden had to relocate and the whole effort was kind of fallow for a few years, but you guys have done an amazing job to rebuild it where it is now. And we're just thrilled to be partners and to be able to to help you guys grow. It's, it's really impressive to see what you've done. Huge congratulations and thanks to Chris and her efforts in the videos. That's very cool knowing Chris. I'm not at all surprised she's doing that. And all the gardeners and families involved is just really exciting. The involvement with, with WIC and Food Pantry, it's just it's heartwarming to see that kind of success and that kind of expansion. So I can't imagine anybody here's got any hesitancy to support the new lease and a long release. Anybody on council have any questions for Agnieszka?
No questions, but that was a great presentation and I love that little garden. It's pure Ridgeway.
Just praise.
Pure praise. I love that spot.
Thank you, and I would welcome any of you to pop in at any time during the summer for a tour or join us for a garden opening. I'll be sure to share that opportunity.
Great. We'll definitely do that. Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments for Agnieszka or comments in general about the, the community garden? Don't see any. So someone want to make a motion?
I have moved to approve the lease agreement between Town of Ridgeway and Ridgeway Community Garden for the use of a portion of the Green Street Park as community garden with a term of 20 years. Second.
Awesome. Motion made and seconded. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Grambley.
Aye.
Lakin.
Aye.
Skyler.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Aye.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Thank you to Agnieszka again, to everybody involved out there and
Also a quick shout out to Fred for the AP area. That's also quite successful. And being only a block or two away, my apple trees are very thankful for.
That's great. And I hope that that can that you guys can find a way to continue to support each other and that they maybe can come under the, the wing of your nonprofit. Either way, I think it'll be a continued success. So thanks again. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Judy. Thanks, everybody. Great job. Great job.
Okay, thank you, council, for all your support through this effort and your time tonight.
You're very welcome. All right, that takes us to item number 14, I believe, resolution establishing the athletic, athletic park pavilion concession area fee schedule. Preston?
Thank you, mayor. So staff is requesting that you all consider establishing a formal fee schedule for private use of the athletic park pavilion concession area. It would be similar to the setup for other town facilities like the stage and the community center. Council has the authority to approve and establish a fee schedule for fees required to be paid for private use of, of public property. And staff is recommending the, the schedule depicted in the resolution, obviously. So it is in line with the fees for other facilities, as I said, and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Yeah, I like how simple and sweet you made it. That, that's definitely great. Anybody on council have comments or questions?
Looks good. Is there anything to restrict music there as well? I mean, not to compete with our own music in the park, but could, could a you know, organization lease the space for a concert?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off if you were still asking a question, but theoretically, yes, that hasn't happened yet, but no one has shown interest in, you know, throwing a more major type event or concert over in that area. If that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, I think we'd have to be a little careful with the impact on the neighbors across the athletic field with sound, but you know, we have our rules and ordinance for, for sound in general that probably should address that, but it's a good question. I think mostly it'll be you know, the Ura County Soccer Association, other entities like that that want to put on soccer tournaments. Things like that, but certainly family picnics, wedding receptions. There's all sorts of potential uses out there for sure.
What kind of facilities do we actually have in there that they would be utilizing? Is it just the face itself or the?
With, I'm not sure what else in the kitchen, Preston.
Yeah, I call it the concession area. It's, it's a, it's a very minimal kitchenette. There's not even any appliances in there. There's a I don't know what you'd call like a little janitor's area with, with a sink and some supplies over there. There's a industrial sink and a lot of countertop space, but very limited.
Okay, so there's no appliances whatsoever, even a microwave or toaster oven or anything like that. If anybody wanted to say make popcorn, they'd need to bring their own popper and all that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is it just 110 circuits electricity in the concession area and not no 240?
Probably. Do you know, Preston?
I don't. I wish I knew. I would imagine it's 110.
Yeah, I can't imagine there's 240 in there, but I suppose that they could have put it in with the idea that they might eventually want a stove, but I don't know. We can find out. Any questions in the audience? It's such a great, I walk out there all the time and I just love looking at that thing. Especially coming back into town. It's such an attractive structure. And another little jewel in our crown.
Professionally stained ceiling in there, too.
Yeah, I think a number of us had something to do with that, yeah.
That's right.
All right. Not seeing any hands up. It sounds like you guys are all good with it. Someone want a motion?
I move to approve resolution, resolution number 22-02 establishing the athletic park pavilion concession area fee schedule.
Second.
I think that was Adam. Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Grambley.
Aye.
Lakin.
Aye.
Skyler.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Aye.
Great. Thank staff. Thanks, everybody. Before we move on to item number 15, I need a short bio break. Five minutes. We'll come back at should we make it 7:45, seven minutes?
Good.
Sounds good.
Okay, I'm gonna start promptly at 7:45. That looks like a motel room, Kevin.
Yeah, it's a motel room tonight. How you doing, Russ?
I'm doing well, self.
Yeah, doing really well, doing really, really well. Nice and relaxed, been taking a few days out in the desert, which has been good.
Cool.
Yeah, yeah. How's that big messy ditch in your front yard?
Yeah, well. As much as you can put dirt back in a hole, it's there, so. It always seems to end up looking like more than what you pulled out, so.
Man, but all those problems are solved?
Yeah, the water's back on. It ended up being down the side, so. Underneath the fence. Turns out the fence got put in after the water line.
So you have to pull the fence to fix it?
No, no, I was. With my, with my handy dandy Mini X newly developed skills.
Marketable skills.
Got right up next to the fence and then had to climb into the hole and. With a shovel, I was able to get under the fence to where the leak was, so.
See, and now we have an audience that everybody knows you know how to do this.
Yeah, it's, it's, I'm trying to. I'm pretty pricey.
When you're ready, can you come over?
Oh, boy.
All right, is Terry, you back?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
Okay, back at it, that brings us to item number fifteen. Review and consideration of sponsorship request related to twenty-twenty-two San Juan Rural Philanthropy Days Conference. Preston?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. So as you already know, the town or Ridgway is hosting the twenty-twenty-two San Juan Rural Philanthropy Days Conference in June. Early June, I believe. RPD and the Community Resource Center are requesting the town consider being a sponsor of the event at a twenty-five hundred dollar level. Contribution. Staff doesn't have any issues with the request and would like to point out that. Funding has been earmarked for things like this under the council initiative section of the budget. It's labeled as other contributions. So if council is amenable to the request, there is funding set aside for stuff just like this.
Great. Will be a gold lover level sponsor. Is anybody having concerns about this? I think it makes sense.
Yep.
Yeah, makes sense.
Anybody in the audience have comments or questions about this request? Seeing none, somebody want to make a motion?
I move to approve the. Donation, gold level donation of twenty-five hundred dollars to the San Juan Rural Philanthropy Days.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded, roll call vote please.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Grambley?
Aye.
Lakin?
Aye.
Skyler?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Meyer?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Preston. Pass that along, tell the committee we're excited to be hosting it this year.
Will do.
That brings us to written verbal reports. We've got the town manager's report, which I'll let Preston touch on. Pertinent issues in a minute, but first, anybody else have any? Verbal reports or anything?
Mayor, we did request one more item on the twelve seventy-one grant.
Yeah, yeah, that's, we'll call that item number sixteen.
Yes, sir. Sorry to throw everybody off on that, so. So after going through a very robust pre-application process, the town, I'm happy to announce it wasn't the manager's report, you probably saw it. Happy to announce the town has received a formal invitation to submit an application for the catalyst round of the HB twenty-one, twelve seventy-one dollar. Innovative Housing Strategies Incentives Grant Program, that's a mouthful. These incentive incentives grants can help cover things like tap fees. Infrastructure, parks, playgrounds, other needs, amenities to support a specific affordable housing project. In this case, the town is partnering with the Telluride Foundation's Rural Homes Project. Which they're planning. Or proposing for the western half of block thirty and. Here in Ridgway, so staff is requesting a motion and vote to authorize staff to submit the grant application later this month. Once it's ready to go.
Yeah, I think this is a great, this is just what we were hoping to be able to. Find to help the, help make the Will Homes Project work with its. Road construction needs and various infrastructure needs. I think this is, this is awesome. So I don't think there's any doubt that we want to. Approve this. Anybody have any questions for Preston, need to know more?
I think it's great. Is there anybody still here who wants to comment? Because I want to move to approve it, but I just want to ask if the public wants to say.
Anybody in the audience have questions that want to know more about this? Go for it, Beth.
I moved to authorize staff to apply for. The House Bill twenty-one, twelve seventy-one Innovative Housing Strategies Grant.
Second.
Awesome. Motion made and seconded, roll call vote please.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Grambley?
Aye.
Lakin?
Aye.
Skyler?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Meyer?
Aye.
Awesome, and thanks staff for all your hard work on that. Fingers crossed we. Get over the finish line with that in March. Or shortly thereafter. All right, so that takes us back to. Written and verbal reports. Again, I don't know if anybody on council has anything. If not, we can let Preston. Touch on his town manager's report, any things he wants to make sure that we're, he draws our attention to. We still do have the executive session we gotta do, but. Anybody?
Quick point of information on the, on the last topic. This is just an FYI for those in the audience here. San Miguel Power was able to provide the Telluride Foundation a twenty thousand dollar grant for the projects in Ridgway. And Norwood for the thirty-eight units they're looking to put, fourteen of which are in Ridgway, another whatever that balances twenty-four. I don't do, not doing the math, but in Norwood. So they applied for the Sharing Success Grant. The other applicant and winner was the Voyager Youth Program in town. They got, I think, seventy-five hundred dollars. So just, just point of information.
Very cool. I wanted to ask again, the only one I've heard from is Russ. Has anyone else seen that, watched the highway cleanup videos? That would allow us to do our. Our cleanup stretch west of town?
Adopt a highway thing?
Yeah.
Haven't yet.
Can everybody put that on their priority list so that we can get that done? I don't know. The weather will cooperate, but as dry as it's been, I think we could do that relatively soon if. If everybody gets that done. Good?
Yep.
Send me an email when you've watched it, so I can let the state know that we're ready.
It's just the two, it's just the two videos, the safety one and the meth lab recognition one.
Yep, that's it.
Okay.
We can ask them, we can give them a date and they'll give us vests and bags and all that stuff. Okay, Preston, what do you want to cover on the town manager's report?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I'll, I'll highlight some stuff and then turn it over to you all if you have specific questions on things. I'll try not to talk too much. The first page covers the council workshop that's been scheduled for six P M on February twenty-eighth, that's a Monday. Where reps from LRE Water will come in to present the the water supply assessment. So really excited about that. Want to give a shout out to, oh, Joanne's still on here, Joanne specifically for all her work, working with. Ashley and Mark at LRE Water to get the document ready to go. So looking forward to the twenty-eighth. I know many other people are as well. Wanted to give an update on water revenue. Looking to complete an analysis to see. Where we're at with the water revenue goal. As it relates to fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, we'll look to have a more robust narrative in the next town manager's report, so you all can. Review that and see, see where we're against, where we're at against the the revenue goal. I already mentioned, just based on that last item, the. I'm not going to say the whole thing again, but that affordable housing development, development and setup grant program. Really cool update there that the town's been invited to apply. Youth Council, they are doing a fabulous job. You can help me and give them this update, but they met yesterday, they had their monthly meeting just yesterday afternoon. Their, their website, which is on Google Sites, is fully up and running. They've all added. Individual bios and some words on why they are on. Or participating on the Youth Advisory Council, so it's really cool. If you can access it through the town's website, but definitely check that out. And then each meeting, someone volunteers to do a meeting recap or a summary. Of the meeting and then the YouTube videos are embedded there on the website, so it's really cool features. Last year, the council used the blogger platform, but I think it was you, John, who suggested the Google Sites. Platform, so it's really cool. So check it out if you haven't done it yet. Let's see, there's a lot of good information in here. Page by page. Ridgway Business Park PUD Phase Three, put a little update in. In the report there about how they, the development team there, Ridgway Light Industrial is interested in moving forward. With their preliminary plat. Meeting the conditions of their preliminary plat approval, which dates back to, I think, two thousand eight. They've consistently received. Two-year extensions since two thousand ten. So staff is in conversations about their engineering plan, well, everything really, but specifically their engineering plans and. Of course, their need to update those plans according to the town's current specs and standards. So more, more to evolve there, but I'll definitely keep you all in the public abreast of what transpires there.
Where is that located, Preston?
Yeah. Business Park PUD Phase Three, that would be directly to the north of block thirty, where the Telluride Foundation. Is building, so it's that long strip. Well, kind of long strip up towards Railroad Street.
Right.
And, and a big element is the development of Laura Street from railroad down to. To auto, and then of course, all the way down to Frederick.
Okay, thanks.
Does that, does that paint a better picture?
Yep, I was guessing that's where it was, but that clarified it perfectly. Thank you.
Have there been any developments with Wolf and discussion about Laura Street in that stretch?
Not with Wolf specifically. We met, staff met with. Paul and David with the Telluride Foundation, I don't know, maybe a month ago now, just to check in on. The status of their application and where they're at with everything, and that was a topic of conversation. And it's silence from, from what I understand, silence from Wolf Cattle Company. So they're doing the best they can to move forward, even though there's not a lot of dialogue with with Wolf.
Gotcha.
Let's see, Shane did a great report on. The data that's been collected, speed data on Amelia Street. There's also an update on the Victim Services Program in light of the last council meeting. The, some of the discussions that took place about. The state of the program and additional outreach and stuff, so. I thought those were good updates. Let me know if you have any questions on those. I think I'll stop.
Yeah, I would encourage everybody to take a look at the Youth Advisory Council website, sites.google.com slash view. Slash Ridgway hyphen Y A C. It's in this, it's in Preston's town manager's report, but. We'll get, we should get that link up on the website too, Preston. If we can, also want to point out to everybody the. On our homepage, if you look in the left column, there's a red heading that's, there's sort of a maroon heading that says public information, and there's. Four blue headings under that, and then there's a list of links below those, the blue, the colored headings. The second to the bottom link there is San Miguel and Erie County Regional Climate Action Plan. We just want to bring everybody's attention to that. Please take a look at that and then. I'll ask Preston as well to add a link to the survey that. The Snuffles Energy Board and Eco Action Partners is asking for people to review the cap and and give their feedback on it. Since it's been recently finished and adopted, we want as much community feedback on that as possible, so. Just wanted to mention those things. Not sure what else. I don't know, what do we think of his joke this, this month? Sort of a, sort of a meh, maybe? It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't one of your worst, but it also wasn't one of your best. I don't know. Got, got a chuckle. I gave it a chuckle.
I defer to Bo.
You sure you want to do that?
I have a joke.
Okay.
What is Bach's favorite fruit?
Oh, Bach clicked it.
I assume you.
Johann Sebastian Bach.
What's his favorite fruit?
Fruit.
Banana, na, na.
Banana, na, na.
I knew it had to be something like that.
Oh, that is bad. That is so bad.
It's better than jumper cables.
She didn't like that. Anything to make us laugh, though, that's good.
Which, which movement or symphony was it?
If, I think, yep.
So I, I have an item for the reports.
Okay.
There was a question that had come from someone on council about Love Your Valley Fest. And I just wanted to give you a background on this. I had. Believe I had addressed the council on this during one of our budget discussions. Maybe not this year, but the year before that. The. I've been with Love Your Valley Fest since it started in the mid nineties. In those days, it was, I was on the Valley Land Conservancy Board when we started Love Your Valley. And we used to have a very small amount of people who attended and it was something that happened during the day. And we used to have a very small amount of people who attended, and it was something that happened during the day. But as things grew over time and I started to use that event for fundraising for the concert series to attract brewers, I had to offer them incentives and those incentives were housing on Saturday night and some other things that I got them. Doesn't matter, but what happened is I lost my sponsor that used to give a give me the free housing to give to those brewers. So that is why we have not done Love Your Valley for the last two years and why I am not looking at doing it again. It is not. Anyways, that's that's the start. Go into it longer, but I'll be right here.
Unless we can find ways to put up the brewers, it just doesn't doesn't work out.
Right, because I would spend all the money that I could possibly make on lodging. So.
I'm wondering if we could just brainstorm in here if we could scale it back a little bit and ask for people to do to do home stays. I mean, I know we have a a place that we could put up a brewer or two. I mean, a brewer team potentially, couple people. I don't know if it's worth exploring or not, but just thought I'd throw it out.
Well, I we've reached a place where we could have had twenty brewers at a time to accommodate the many hundreds of people who now come to the event. So if we were going to limit the amount of brewers we had that we have, we're going to have to limit how many participants we're going to allow in. So.
That would only last an hour, right?
Yeah.
Is it like putting up the Rolling Stones or Led Zeppelin or something?
I don't I don't know. I never heard any complaints by the lodging facility, but
Oh, yeah, no, I don't think I don't think they trash their accommodations.
What about camping on town property, say over by the stage?
So we asked for them to bring the beer for free. So being sure if they want to come camp and bring things for free. I mean, there there has to be an incentive.
Yeah.
Well, it'll be a sad loss if we can't do it anymore, but I would be interested in assisting doing some outreach to see. I mean, I was always struck by how especially in its last five or 10 years, the brewers were all like, oh, man, this is the funnest. We love this event. This is
Oh, that was
we come to.
Yeah, I didn't have a problem getting my brewers because everybody loved having the opportunity to come here and spend a weekend.
So I think maybe if we can try and come up with some creative housing solutions, well, we'll just have to keep thinking and talking about it, but
How many? How many people? So you were bringing in twenty brewers and how many people did they typically typically bring with them? Two to three per brewery, something like that?
I I would give them a room for two.
Okay, each brewer get a room for two.
I mean, I have a I mean, that is, this is John's idea isn't a crazy one because it is an event that was the timing in the spring when people want to get outside and interact with each other after a long winter is it's just a good event.
It's cool. Yeah.
I would. I would like to see if we can pull something together and I may be able to help on that as well, so.
Well, it seems to me and Pam will probably back me up on this. I'm guessing at this point it's like now or never. We'd have to reach out to the brewers yesterday to pick a date and and see if they can come and then figure out the lodging thing, right? I mean, it's here. It is early February and we're talking May. Their schedules fill up. Pam, what do you think? Is it worth trying to do something creative or is it too late for this year?
I usually start working on Love Your Valley in January. I mean, I could reach out to some of my brewers that have been with me forever and even see if they're still interested or still doing these types of events. I think a lot of people have caught on to that whole idea of what we had started so long ago. So I could see, you know, and based on the fact that we'd be offering something different than we have in the past, it's something they would be interested in.
Two questions, Pam. Is there available lodging that just wants to charge rather than donate? Is there a matter of how we might raise money to pay for lodging?
That's The whole point of Love Your Valley became about raising money for the concert series, not about the town having another event.
I understand, but I mean, if they're philanthropic.
Money off the event and it would go towards the concert series. I mean, we could do an event that we broke even on just to do it if that's what the council wanted.
And or could we could we have them charge for the beer? Or I guess they they do. How did you said it was
No, no, not with the liquor laws in the state. We we're already charging.
Well, I would encourage you to reach out to to like your your core brewers and just explore the interest of even potential. I'm looking at May and it looks to me like the twenty first to twenty eighth would be the twenty first would probably be ideal.
Twenty eighth, isn't that Memorial Day?
Probably.
And that's graduation weekend.
Thirty. Yeah, so twenty twenty first.
Right that that we
Yeah, why don't you reach out to at least a handful of them, Pam, and see what they say and then let us know and we can we can start eating the bushes to find find housing if if there's interest.
All right, I'll get back to you.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it. All right, what else do we? We want to go ahead and do the executive session. Then are we done otherwise?
Unless anybody has anything else.
Okay. Bo, do you want to read the the citation again, please?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, Mayor. If we could get an executive session pursuant to twenty four six four oh two four E for the for the purposes of determining positions for matters that are relative to subject to negotiations with respect to the installation of certain improvements on Lena Street and a possible agreement with Lena Lena Street Commons LLC.
Somebody can just say so moved.
I moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Beth, seconded by Russ. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Beck.
Hi.
Grambley.
Hi.
Lakin.
Hi.
Skyler.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Hi.
All right, thanks. So thank you, everybody in the audience. We have to go into executive session now. So thanks for coming tonight. Hopefully, maybe by March, we could be back in person. I sure hope so. But thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate your input as always. See you on town.
And then just thank you, Mayor. And quickly, I don't anticipate that we'll have an action item after the executive session.
Okay, good to know. So if you're not on town council or staff, you need to terminate your your session, please.
We still got about three hangers on here.
You need to leave. Dana Ivors, if you're still on, you need to you need to leave the meeting, please. Gail Melgren, Jake Cantor.
We do have the ability to remove participants from the meeting. Just wanted to, you know, full disclosure there. That is an option.
Yeah, maybe we just do one last call and then I think that that's fine, Preston.
Again, Jake Cantor, Gail Melgren and Dana Ivors, you guys need to to leave the meeting now so we can have our executive session, please. Not sure if Jake and Dana are still on. Are you guys there?